Right.
Get a lot of money.
Oh, I know.
Dealing with them and then the new transition. I don't think it's coming through. No. We cut back. There's only about eight, seven or eight committee members now. They cut back somewhere. Yeah.
Hello.
How are you? Good, good.
Oh, great. Thank you. Do we, how is this executive session gonna work? Do we know anything about? Okay. There's three of us, two of them, so. Oh, we are all together, okay. I thought. That's not what I was told earlier. Okay, that's fine. I'll just have to grab my. I, yeah, I just left it in my office, but. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I have, I have questions I printed out, but I think they're on my computer. I can.
Microphones.
I turned mine on.
I'll turn mine on in a minute.
We'll go right into the meeting.
Make sure we've got our audio up here. Okay, we are on.
Morning, everyone. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with respeaking of justice for all.
The prayer today. O God of creation, you have blessed us with the changing of the seasons. Remind us of the wonder of, of your creation. Remind us that it is you who gives us the breath of life. Amen.
Morning, Commissioners. I have several items that I approved on September twenty-second. For the Department on Aging, I accepted the resignation of Reba Dykes, an in-home services manager to be effective December fifth, 2025. Also, for the Department on Aging, I granted permission to advertise for the position of full-time in-house services manager, number one zero three four, internally for a period of five days with applications accepted from October sixth, 2025, through four thirty PM on ten October, 2025. If no qualified candidate is found, the position will be advertised externally until the position is filled. Also, on September twenty-sixth, I approved and executed for Community and Economic Development, a satisfaction release of mortgage for Stephen A. Balko and Terry L. Balko as the mortgage from June twenty-sixth, 2012. New construction assistance for property located at one four seven zero four Northview Drive, Middlefield, in the amount of eight thousand fifty dollars has been satisfied. On September twenty-sixth, I accepted the retirement resignation for Tammy Kuhn, full-time administrative coordinator for maintenance, to be effective December thirty-first, 2025. And that is all.
So for Reba, she retired or she?
Yes, yes.
And her last day is when?
Uh, December fifth. Yes. And that is all. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Items two and three is about the minutes. Uh, we'll combine them July twenty-ninth and August fifth. Their motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Commissioner Spudler, Commissioner Bricky.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBarr.
Yes.
Item number four, Commissioners' officers requesting the Board discuss and approve amended policy public comment during the Board of Commissioners' meeting effective today, September thirtieth.
Commissioner Spudler, Commissioner Bricky.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBarr.
Yes.
So, so the format of the agenda, we're gonna have public comment at the beginning and at the end, or towards the end. Those wishing to make a public comment or ask a question of items appearing on the meeting agenda, please sign in and wait to be called upon. Begin at the stating your full name, address, and we'll have up to three minutes to, to comment or ask a question. We are kindly asked to refrain from disorderly or disruptive conduct. Has anybody signed in?
No, because it's probably brand new when nobody realized that it was today, so.
Well, actually, physically, everybody would know about it for next meeting, so.
Correct.
Uh, we'll start then.
So I don't know if there's anyone that has any questions on today's agenda.
Item six, financials.
Morning, Commissioners. Adrian Gordon with the Commissioners' Office. Today's financials include, among other things, a transfer from the General Fund to the Building Improvement Fund to begin to build up its resources for upcoming projects. Among the encumbrances are several travel encumbrances. One from the Auditor to attend the 2025 County Auditors Association Winter Conference in Dublin, Ohio. From JFS to attend state mandated visitations, which I left the locations off of that because of the involvement of minors. From Juvenile Court to attend the 2025 Ohio CASA Conference in Columbus, Ohio. From the Probate Court to attend the twenty-five, 2025 Ohio Association of Probate Judges Court Investigators Training. And also the 2025 Probate Clerks, Clerks Conference, both in Dublin, Ohio. There is a then-and-now encumbrance from the Veterans Office to KT Custom Logos for a bronze plaque that was purchased without previously being encumbered. There's a purchase order from Water Resources to Dex Imaging LLC for the purchase of seven new copiers and multifunction printers for the office, McFarland, the lab, and the Merritt Road Garage. Among the vouchers are fifty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy cents from the Commissioners' Office to the Jogga County Airport Authority for the local match on pay request number four of the Parallel Tax Way project. Two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents from the Engineers' Office to Grade Line Incorporated for the re-alignment of Haskins Road Bridge. Hundred and thirty-five thousand, five twenty-one thirty-six from the County Engineer to Roniak Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Wilson Mills Road. Three hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars from the Sheriff's Office to Preston Chevrolet for six new Tahoe Police Patrol Vehicles. And a hundred thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents from the Sheriff's Office to Diversitec LLC for replacement batteries, racks, and trays for the eight hundred megahertz communications towers. And finally, revenue certifications from the ADP Board for additional reimbursement revenue and from the Board of Elections for additional state grant revenue that was not previously budgeted for 2025.
Um, regarding the Tahos for the Sheriff's Office, are those replacement vehicles?
I believe that they are intended to be replacement vehicles, but sometimes the direct replacement for those kind of get passed down through the fleet. And I think the, the sheriff can, yeah, so. And so there, there will be some that get probably displaced towards the bottom of their, their fleet as they get retired, as the, the hand-me-downs come down the, the pike, so.
Um, so I'll move to approve the financials.
Commissioner Spudler. Commissioner Bricky.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBarr.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the request for partial payment number twenty-four for Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Jogga County Courthouse Expansion, GMP Phase One and Two expenses in the amount of one million, seven hundred and six thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents. And this has been approved, yes, by the architect and the owner's rep.
Commissioner Spudler. Commissioner Bricky.
Yes.
Okay, and then one more on here for me. The Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution twenty-five dash one eight four, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the County Auditor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you gonna, Frank, can you come up and explain this?
Okay. So for number nine, um, Frank Antonucci, ADP. I, I just want to be clear. The ADP Board is not requesting this. This request should come from the Board of County Commissioners. After discussing with the Commissioners' Legal Counsel, this has to come from the legislative authority within the county, which is the Board of County Commissioners. So I'm happy to answer any questions on the policy, but the ADP Board is not requesting it, and, and I don't have a, a current request for action in for that. So that will come from your Board in order to comply with the new change to the law in Ohio Revised Code nine point six four.
I do have some questions about the policies.
Sure.
If an elected official violates one of the policies, what sort of enforcement mechanism?
There is no enforcement as far as I know. I believe that the Board, um, the ADP Board has the authority to maybe suspend user credentials. That's the extent of it.
Yeah, so if it, like, for an example, if an elected official doesn't follow their mandatory training, is it, is it really mandatory? I mean, what, what can happen?
I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, um, the State Auditor will request this information next year as part of the, um, there's a standard state audit, and then there's an IT general controls audit, and there's a policy audit as well. They ask, they will ask for those lists. They have asked in the past, but it's been kind of a, we just want to know. Next year, um, we anticipate them asking and then basically looking at that and then potentially putting that in their letter that they issued to the county.
And then, this is a question I was thinking about because of the Russell PD issue. I, some of these policies talk about how they apply to, to vendors and contractors as well. So my question is, how is compliance enforced on outside vendors who provide IT services?
Yeah, great question, Commissioner. So in terms of the Russell PD one, those are vendors that are not under ADP contract. Those are separate with that. But we do have a number of vendors that are utilized and paid for through ADP or the county that are mandatory with that, and they are held to that standard. So in terms of MFA requirements, user access requirements, the policy, it does all apply to them. We've had issues in the past where vendors did not comply with that, and we basically don't do business with them anymore. Release them, whatever. So, yeah, absolutely. It's, they're absolutely held to the same standard.
And I mean, I think one of the interesting things about this new legislation is, um, you know, the requirements that the legislative body has to publicly say they're paying ransom if it, if it comes down to that. And so one thing I started thinking about is what, what's the procedure for ADP and/or dark staff if they believe rant, like, paying a ransom is, is your only option? So what, like, what would that look like?
Well, that would be absolutely worst-case scenario.
Admittedly, yeah.
Yeah, so you're essentially asking if within internal staff recommends that to the ADP Board. I think the ADP Board would have to vote, and I think the County Commissioners.
Would have to vote. So it would come, it would come first to the ADP Board, and then it would come before the Commissioners.
Yeah, you as well as I know that sometimes the state legislature has these great ideas, and I do believe this is good law. It's just ambiguous in terms of what legislative authority means. So in that case, when it's ambiguous, I think we have a responsibility to ensure that all the legislative authorities do that. So for instance, we're talking about this today with the County Commissioners. Tomorrow, I'll be in Hampden Township. They're doing the same thing because they are a services entity that's not necessarily statutorily under ADP, but has chosen to be. The ADP Board also has to act too. So I think that all of those entities have to, if you have legislative authority, like the ADP Board does, it's separate hiring authority from the County Commissioners. I think you just have to act on that then to make sure our bases are covered. But in that case, I think there's the, the vote on that sort of a thing. But long before that, you know, you'd be in the systems discussing that. You have to bring in outside federal agencies. There's a number of, of aspects you have to do if you believe that, just knowing from what local communities have had to deal with.
So for example, I guess, and then if, say, Hampden has, has some sort of ransomware attack, that would go, you feel like that would go to the, the ADP Board to approve the ransom and the trustees?
I do.
Okay.
I would say we have to remember there's the integration of all these networks with that.
Yeah, right.
So if it affects one, it affects all.
Yeah, fair enough.
I don't know that anything would be simply isolated to only Hampden. It would be the larger network itself.
Well, I, I hope we never have to answer any of these questions in real life, but I, I mean, I just, you know, my gears started turning a little bit thinking about this legislation.
I still believe the best process is to not do what some of these communities have done and just wait on it and then pay up and hope that it works out, but rather have backend procedures and, and processes in place where you just say, we're not doing that, and we have an alternative option.
Yeah, absolutely.
Which as you're aware, um, from being on the Board, we are going in that direction and have things going like that.
Yeah. Um, okay, I, I, do you gentlemen have any other questions about?
I just think it's a step in the right direction with cybersecurity. It's a hot topic, and maybe with this legislation, it'd help, and maybe six months from now, they'll tighten it up a little bit more and answer some of the questions that, that a lot of us have in the state of Ohio.
And I agree with you, Commissioner. I think that this is the legislature finally acting, recognizing that the locals, um, aren't, there isn't internal discipline to do this themselves, and it's requiring external discipline to tell them, hey, you should probably get updated to 2025 here. Um, we in Jogga County have been at the forefront of this. We're further ahead than, than many of these counties in the state of Ohio, and I think that even this action today will be further ahead than maybe nearly all the Boards of County Commissioners.
Well, so that is gonna be my other question, is out of the eighty-eight counties, do we know where? Because I, I mean, we had a conversation with some of the Commissioners from another county, and they seemed pretty clueless about where, how they were gonna get up to speed by the end of the month as required by the law.
Yeah, many have reached out to us, and we simply say, here's the documents we've approved. You're welcome to these. Just note that you can't just pass these and then say, we did it. You actually have to have the backend and everything actually meet those standards. So we've been very cautious to tell other counties and townships, uh, boards, districts that. I, yeah, I don't know. I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah, you can't just pass a multi-factor authentication policy. You actually have to put that policy into play, right? Is that your point? Yeah.
A num, uh, uh, there are a number of other aspects to that that are very complicated that we've been building here for years now. I don't know, I, my guess is there will be just a number of entities that are just not compliant, and they'll have to deal with it. And then what the state legislature, the state will do from there? I have no idea.
Yeah.
But I don't think we want to be on the backend of that.
No, we, let's not be the guinea pig in, in this. So, um, yeah, so we're grateful, I think, for the ADP's boarding and getting ahead so we can be in compliance with this policy. I'll move to approve item number three.
Commissioner Spudler. Commissioner Bricky.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBarr.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
And then we are in determining where it's going to live.
Yeah, Paul, probably in our policy manual.
Good morning.
Good morning. Jim Flay is from the Prosecutor's Office. So I have four items on the agenda, but they're all related to the same ongoing topic. So we had the bid opening for the upgrades at the Prosecutor's Office, and we received two bids from Infinity and Millstone. They were three thousand dollars apart. And Laura and I and the architect and, um, the Maintenance Department went through these bids pretty close, very closely, I would say. And a, a couple things, which, and it's funny, while we approve this stuff legally all the time, we actually never really go through this ourselves. So it was, it was a good learning experience for, for Laura and I especially, because we're not usually involved in the nuts and bolts of it. It's the more higher end, you know, stamping it, signing off on it. So, one of the thing, and apparently this is common. So we required, um, that the bid solicitation package with the subcontract assignments not exceed fifty percent of the total contract cost. So one of the bidders, um, their, I would say the detail that they got into with their, um, subcontractors was, was pretty lacking and concerning. And the other one, uh, listed them out, which we appreciated, and I'll get into more of that later, but, um, neither of them complied with, with that requirement. But in talking to Maintenance, the architect, and, and looking at it, and, and the package itself, we're, that's item number eleven, we're asking that the Board waive that requirement for both bids. So they all, yeah.
Sorry, can I interrupt you on that one? So why is that a requirement for bids?
I think they normally put it in there because they don't just want, and you, you know this better than anyone, Jim. I don't think they want a bunch of people, you know, somebody just coming in who's gonna really be doing one percent, and they just have like a superintendent on the job, and then it's just a, a free-for-all of subcontractors. I don't mind a lot of subcontractors. The, and, and again, this is part of what we're getting into with one bid over the other. One of the bidders listed out all the subcontractors. The other bidder did not. And that's not to say that, that, that bidder could change some of the subcontractors, but then they'd have to go through us to change them. And that gives us control over that, and we were able to vet and look at the subs, and the architect and maintenance liked the subs that, that they listed. Whereas the other bid, it's seemingly written in in pencil. The, they, they have the main, the bidder doing fifteen point nine three percent. I'm not sure how they came up with that. Because the math's incomplete. So it's fifteen point nine three percent for the, the ma, the bidder to do demo carpentry and interiors. And then there, um, and then somebody else did thirty percent. I, it was, and then that's it. So it doesn't add up to a hundred percent at all. Whereas the other bid, you know, really did go through and list a bunch of subcontractors, um, and I, and, which was nice. And, um, did do a breakdown of percentages, um, you know, which, which we appreciated. So that was that issue. So there's the, you know, the lump sum breakdown, which neither of them did. The fifty percent, which neither of them did. One did better than the other. So those were the, the requirements we were gonna ask you to waive, um, to get this going. And then with regard to the bids, again, three thousand dollars apart, but we feel that, that the, um, the lowest and best bid is the Millstone Management Group because of the subcontractor issue. The Maintenance Department and the architect felt much more comfortable, and that's not a knock. I mean, Infinity's obviously doing the courthouse. Millstone, which is a Jogga County company, is doing the, the transitional living center work right now. So they're both working in the county, and, um, and they're both, I, I talked to Christine about the TLC and how they're doing on that, and, and she gave them really nice reviews. And, and we know what we're getting with, I, I've been very happy with Infinity with the courthouse. But, you know, for the three thousand dollar difference and, and not being able to pin them down on the subs, it, it, there's a comfort level there, and we felt that for just such a small difference in price, we preferred the, the bid. I think the bid from Millstone was much more thought out and prepared. I mean, I, I don't know if you really looked at it, but it's pretty apparent. Oh, you weren't, I thought, you don't get them?
All, all she gave me was this, Jim.
Oh, but I thought you.
I don't have them. You have them.
Well, I'm sorry about that.
They go with you when we do the bid opening, so I don't have any of that.
I'm sorry. That's why I was, uh, when I talked to you yesterday, I was kind of joking about the. Yeah, so I, I just, um, I mean, I think a lot of the one bid was filled out in the hallway on somebody's lap. Be how I can describe it. So it just, I have a comfort level with the one over the other, but, so that's what we're asking the Board to take that action, and that's what we're recommending. Would be to waive the, uh, ten is to waive the requirement for the bid solicitation package for the lump sum breakdown. Eleven is to waive the requirement for the subcontract assignments not to exceed fifty percent of the total contract cost. Then I'm asking, um, the Board, uh, number twelve, to reject the bid from Infinity Construction as it was not the lowest and best bid and failed to provide all responsive and satisfactory information required by the bid solicitation for the project. And thirteen, asking, um, the Board to award the bid to Millstone Management Group for the renovation project as its bid constituted the lowest and best bid.
So big, big picture, I think, two weeks ago, Auditor Walder, Walder came in before us, and he talked about wants versus needs, and he decided his office renovation was more of a want than a need. Do you feel yours is, is a need? I mean, I know there's security things that are going into place here. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so, and, and I agree. I mean, the, you know, the project that, that the auditor talked about, which was the conference room in the basement, I mean, you know, I think that was hovered between a want and a need. We do not have any conference space on the square. And, um, it's, it's needed. But again, I, I understand his, his reasoning. And I wasn't upset to put that off because part of doing this project is we're gonna use that basement area for material storage. You know, we don't have a lot of room over there in the parking lot and such, so we're, we're gonna actually utilize the basement for a construction office and, and some material storage in that as a staging area, um, because I plan on keeping everybody in the office during the project. So, so that part is nice, and, you know, the basement's not gonna suffer for it because it's a terrible space. But with this, um, you know, again, the, the main components of this, the security thing's the main component. And I did spec out the same ballistic mater, drywall material or paneling that they're using over at the courthouse for the lobby. The lobby wasn't just, we don't have building security. We have it on the second floor for the court, but we don't have building security, which is something that has always concerned me. And so I felt like we need to kind of harden the defenses in the lobby since we don't have that building security. So. And then taking over municipal court, kind of a, a one, um, thing that I didn't, I didn't probably, not that I had anything to do with that. I mean, they changed the state law on me, but, um, I ran out of space really fast. So right now, we have some of our staff, our. fast. So, right now, we have some of our staff, our more seasonal staff, but they're operating out of the conference room. When we had that mediation, I had, they, they were actually had, their computers were set up in the kitchen. Uh, and that's where they worked for the day. So, when we have, you know, grand jury or, or mediations or whatever and we're using the conference room, they have to, they have to sit in the kitchen, which isn't really an optimal situation. So, um, and then we don't even have an office for one of the employees. So, that, that's, um, been just a headache. So, it is creating, it's creating three new offices, but it's, one of the offices is for an existing employee who's kind of got some like kind of general area space. Um, so that part i- i- isn't, I mean, those are really needs. I mean, we need, the security is number one and the, and the additional office space is, is number two.
And actually, to create that one space, your office is gonna be losing square footage.
Yeah, so, I, I don't know why it was designed that way, but my office is kind of like a, an epic owl. And, um, so I'm gonna put a, put a wall up in my office and kinda cut it in half and then use the other half as an, as an additional office space. We just don't have that much square footage up there. I mean, right now, we're using, you know, like my investigator's in what was a storage room is his office, which was where he'll be staying. But, uh, [laughing] because I've gotta put somebody else in the new, in the new office. But, um, but yeah, I mean, it, it, so we were already utilizing space for offices that weren't, um, that weren't, uh, really meant to be office space. But it's fine. We're fine with all that.
With Mills- Millstone Management, uh, can they verify a drug-free workplace?
I would hope so.
And, and when you do get this information, I'd, I'd like to see it. I'd like to review it.
Oh, the, the bids? Yeah. Cause if you prove-
The bids and the, cause on paper, people say they have a drug-free workplace, but they kinda sorta don't.
I would hope if they're working on the TLC, they're, that they've been following that. Well.
Commissioner Spittler, Commissioner Brackey, Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Take care. Well, and I'll be back one more time when we, we'll negotiate the contract now and then I'll be back for that. So, thanks again. Do you want me to stay for the, the opioid settlement thing? I mean, I can hang around. I know Christine's here. I said the commissioner's office.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
I was like, I don't think it's necessary personally, but.
I'll stay here.
This is the, um, request from the public defender's office to reappoint Joseph H. Weiss to the public defender commission for a new four-year term, October 4, 2025 through October 3, 2029. His current term expires October 3.
There's no one here from the public defender's office?
I mean, if you have any questions.
Nikki Janison from the public defender's office.
Good morning. Could you talk about what the public defender commissioner, commission does?
Um, they, oh, they appoint our chief public defender and they oversee our office and staffing and budget and what we need and they approve everything that goes through. It's made up of five, uh, five, um, people appointed. Three are appointed by county commissioners and two are appointed by the judges, county police court judges.
Oh, okay. Um, and was this, uh, this position advertised?
Um, no. They, he's been the, on our commission for the last two terms, I believe. Um, Joe was actually the very first public defender in the county. Um, and he's willing to still serve on the commission.
I mean, I, Amy, I know, I, like, I just wanna see some sort of uniform process where we're advertising these to public. I mean, like, I, and I have nothing against Mr. Weiss. I'm sure he's, you know, a great board member, but like my start in public service started, there was somebody on the Board of Public Health that wanted to be reappointed. The board wanted him reappointed and I still got the seat because it was advertised. So, um, I just wanna see, and I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm making a case against, uh, these positions being advertised, but, um, I just wanna see it, I wanna see board appointments opened and I wanna see options before us because, uh, you know, there's the Matta-Sodian system of checks and balances. We should have this power to appoint people and board shouldn't be telling us who's, who we, we have to take. So, I'll do this one, but I, I just think we need to get a handle on this process.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve item number fourteen.
Commissioner Spittler, Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
You too.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Scott Hildebrand, Tom Rowan, Sheriff's Office.
Good morning.
Number fifteen, this is the, uh, as you recall, I don't know, about a year ago, we started helping out Ashtrabula. Um, they've since received a, a grant from the state and they'll be putting a large addition on their jail. But, in the meantime, they need help housing inmates. So, they keep continuing to extend this contract that we have with them and this is, continues it to the end of the year. It's been working out pretty good. We're doing seven, eight inmates a day for them.
So, we get seventy-five dollars an inmate. What, what does it cost us? Do we have a rough idea?
Well, yeah, actually, it's, it's only the meals that it costs. We don't have any more employees. We don't have more lights turned on and, so, you know, we're doing, what, three dollars a meal? So, it's, it's a pretty good profit margin.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. I'll move to approve item number fifteen.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
Just so you all know too, I found the executed version.
Good morning.
Austin Rice, EMA. Um, for number sixteen, um, every two years, the LEPC needs to resubmit a membership to the state for approval. But before we do that, we need to get that approved and signed by the board.
Can you tell me what the LEPC does?
Sure. It is the local emergency planning committee. That is, um, a group that deals with hazardous chemicals in the county, facility spills, works with a hazmat team.
Okay, very good. I'm Lou Chapur, item number sixteen. Commissioner Spittler, Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen, the commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the agreement between the Joga County Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services and the Joga County Board of County Commissioners for the oversight and distribution of funds received by Joga County as part of the opioid settlement.
Good morning, Christine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Joga Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services, Christine Locomiac, Executive Director.
Hi.
Hi.
I mean, I don't have any more questions. You wanna talk about this anymore? We had kind of a thorough conversation, I feel, at the fair about this.
Yeah, um, Prosecutor Flay's, uh, he worked on putting an MOU together. Um, really, it is, um, an opportunity for us to work together to make sure that, um, we're using the funds, um, not, you know, duplicating services or, or other things. Um, I think, you know, having my knowledge of addiction and the programs that we're currently funding, it's a good checks and balances of, you know, if somebody applies for a program that maybe we sunsetted or they weren't having good outcomes, it gives us an opportunity for the commissioner's office and the Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services to work together. Obviously, um, the recommendations will become in front of you and you will make the final decisions, but it gives an opportunity to kind of vet that a little bit more in the community. I know that, um, both Commissioner DeVorek and I sit on the Region Thirteen Board and will be getting two point one million dollars in the next couple of months to approve into the communities. And for example, the sheriff's office is not allowed to apply for that money because Sheriff Hildebrand is also on Region Thirteen. And so, those are the kind of things that I think it's important to have a higher, um, you know, scope, that if the sheriff's office needs something, um, you know, this may be an opportunity where we can work with the sheriff's office with this funding because they, they, they can't qualify for this other two point one million. So, I think just kind of keeping those things in mind, um, where we can just partner together.
And what will the next step be, Christine, in this, in this process? Will you be, um, like drafting a grant application or?
Yeah, we, typically what we do is we, we have an RFP process.
Okay.
However, um, I do have a couple of, um, situations that are top on mind right now where, um, I've had an opportunity to talk with Lieutenant Amanda Janovich, both of the judges, Judge Pashke and Judge, um, um, I'm sorry.
Rambo.
No.
No?
Judge Pashke and Judge, um, Stupika. And we've identified some concerns that are happening, um, with some treatment in the jail. And so, this may be an opportunity where I could call a meeting together. And I think also the prosecutor's office, he has, um, identified some issues, um, where maybe we could work first locally in some of those systems. Um, of course, I will bring this to you. Instead of like going out and asking for brand-new programs, I, I think there's just been several of us who have identified some treatment needs that are happening, um, in the jail that we might be able to help with.
Sounds good. Oh, uh.
Just for a clarification, uh, you mentioned the two point one million, that's for four counties, not just for Joga County.
Yes, correct.
So.
Too bad, it's not just for us.
Right, right, right. We have to share.
I move to approve item fourteen. Commissioner Spittler, Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number eighteen, the commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the county employee benefit consortium of Ohio Incorporated SEBCO participation agreement for the period January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2028.
Good morning. My name is Megan Erickson. I'm with the commissioner's office. Um, the commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the county employee benefit consortium of Ohio Incorporated, otherwise known as SEBCO, participation agreement for the period of January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2028.
Megan, how is SEBCO compensated?
Um, monetarily, you mean?
Yes.
Um, we pay them, um, monthly bills that, for the, just the administrative side of things.
Okay. So, there's a, like, an administrative fee?
Right, yeah.
Okay. It's not like rolled into our healthcare costs, like a broker's fee?
No, no, no.
Um, and what, what is that fee?
Um, I don't have the number on that. I was just looking for it. Um, it's not in this agreement. Um.
What we pay them isn't in, yeah, I mean, I didn't see it either. That's why I was-
Yeah. So, it's just outlined that it, the costs consist of claims and fund contribution. Um, it's fixed costs, it's claims contingency reserve, fund contribution. Um, yeah, I don't have a dollar figure.
Um, and what's our deadline to execute this?
Um, December 1st.
December?
Yes. But in order to get all of our healthcare, um, options in order, we kind of need to approve it sooner than that.
Yeah, this is the first step that we want, you know?
Correct.
Or just stating that we wanna stay in SEBCO.
Right. And we are, we're working with plan changes and things like that. So, we need to get everything kind of in order before their December 1st deadline.
So, if we, I mean, if we voted no on SEBCO, what, what, what happened? What's our option? What's our other, what are our other options?
Um, we don't really have any other options at this point. We would kinda have to go to a broker. You mean to get out of SEBCO completely and start a whole new healthcare program?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we would probably need to find a broker for that.
Okay. I mean, you know, I think what I'm concerned about is this is a three-year agreement. It's not a one-year agreement. It's a three-yeared agreement. We're looking at, um, healthcare costs going up eighteen percent. That's significant. And, um, it feels like we're not, I mean, we're given kind of a bad, it's, and this may be the, the least bad choice out of a lot of bad choices.
Right.
Um, like, you know, I understand there's been some serious claims in the county, um, but we don't really have anything to compare it to. I, I think that's concerning.
Yeah, I mean, it is the largest consortium. We're, there's forty-nine out of eighty-eight counties in this consortium. I have looked at other ones. Um, the largest other one I saw was eleven, like town, smaller townships, um, that got together, which that's, they're not supported quite like we are in the forty-nine county consortium.
Yeah, and over the years, we've, we've actually made some requests and looked into other, other, you know, benefit packages and benefit options out there. And this is, this is still always seems to be the, uh, you know, the, the driving one in the, in the states with counties that they get.
It really is, yeah.
Be involved in. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I second the motion only because, um, it's a, it's a three-year program and there are options that, you know, I've been getting things to read. If we take a little bit less coverage, it will only be like eight point two or eight point three percent.
Right, we can minimize that.
Yeah, so, I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Spittler, Commissioner Brackey.
No.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen, public comment. Uh, those wishing to make a comment or ask a question to this matter of concerns, please raise your hand to be called upon. So.
Go to the microphone.
Really simple question. Uh, Gail Russey, Lake of Women Voters, the two point one million for Region Thirteen, you said it's four counties. Is it split up equally?
They created a, in Columbus, in two thousand twelve, thirteen ar- area, they created up a formula based on population and drugs sold. And, um, I think Lake County gets the most out of that, let's just call it two million dollars, and then Portage and Ashtrabula, and then we're, we're real close to Ashtrabula for dollar-wise.
Okay, thank you.
Are the drugs sold calculated? Is that just based on arrests?
No, not arrests, uh, from the, from the drugstores, you know, from all the prescriptions sold.
Oh, I see. Prescription drugs. I got you. I got you, I got you.
Howard, South Russell Village. The airport ceremony on Wednesday was wonderful, was well-attended, was well-managed, and it shows that we have a tremendous asset in this county with our airport. It needs to grow larger and it's better managed than most other departments. And I was happy to see the large turnout we had. Look forward to being involved with them in the future. Thank you.
Any, okay. Just state your name and your-
Joe from Joga County, Watson. Um, my, uh, attendance at meetings is somewhat limited, but I've been to the, the NOACA meeting and I've been here. And at one of the last meetings I was at here, um, Mr. DeVorek, you said you're a traditional, so you like to rely on the experts' opinions when it was talking about the roof. And today, we've had the opportunity to listen to experts on expenditures and stuff like that. And my attendance at NOACA has been a little bit limited, but I understand that we have an expert, Mr. Claypool, probably a, the pretty big expert on NOACA, but a couple, um, board members here have petitioned NOACA to remove Mr. Claypool from that board. And I always hoped that you would maybe reconsider that and keep him on there so that this way he could, um, be a voice in favor of Joga County. Please and thank you.
Just, just to clarify, there's been no petition to get rid of Mr. Claypool. That the suggestion was to have two commissioners and the engineer.
Right.
Mr. Claypool is an alternate. He's not a member of NOACA.
But it would be, in my opinion, it would be more important to have him there as opposed to be-
But I'm saying, this would not necessarily remove Mr. Claypool. It just removes one commissioner.
Okay, but his, it's, it appears that majority of the NOACA discussions are more policy-related as opposed to engineer-related. So, having a pol- him there voicing his opinion and speaking on policy seems a little bit more important than having an engineer on a regular basis.
Every other county has their engineer because they're advocating for funding for roads and bridges. I mean, that's, that should be the purpose. But again, nobody's removing Mr. Claypool. We're certainly replacing one of the commissioner's seats. It, I mean, we haven't decided, first of all, it's to be ratified by the counties and after it did, um, we would have to decide who's gonna give up that seat. There's been no determination that it would be Mr. Clay, miss, well, it would be Mr. Spitterelli who, um, gives his seat to Mr. Claypool.
Okay, well, hopefully you'll keep that in mind and keep him on, keep him as a regular attending. Thank you.
Anybody? Anybody else for public comment? Okay, we'll move on to item number twenty, executive session, considering the employment of a public employee pursuant to R.A. Vice Code one twenty-one point two-two.
Christie, we could, we could potentially flip-flop these two, I believe, in the essence of time, considering we also have something after session today, if you're in favor of that, so we can keep moving?
Yeah, whatever you would like.
Okay. Christie?
So we're move twenty-one ahead of twenty.
Yes, please, I think that would be the best use of time.
So number twenty-one is discussing the compensation of public employees pursuant to R.C. one twenty-one point two-two, G one.
Yes, and for that, it will be Megan, Adrian, and Kathy.
Commissioner Spittarelli, Commissioner Braking?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore?
Yes.
I'm in at ten fifteen. Yes. Good discussion.
Cooler out here than it is back in there. It was hot.
Yeah, it's probably put three elected officials in a room together.
Yes.
Where's Megan though?
Yeah, I think we're gonna do no action.
Well, there is that one action that pertains to healthcare.
Oh, yes, we have that. Let me go grab her.
I have you back at 11:12.
Okay.
The possible action.
There'll be some action and then some action later.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
Because if it's a 15.
Usually the elevator's broken anymore.
Couple more actually, so there'll be an opportunity to update the total.
If they have an elevator, even a South Russell Village one.
They're pretty straightforward.
The elevator last month broke down. I got stuck on it.
You can always take that before you guys adjourn if you wanted to like.
Just start it on your other one.
One action. Megan Erickson from the Commissioner's Office. To approve and accept the SEDCO member 2025-2026 Wellness Program, SEDCO Rewards 200, partnered with Anthem for Giaga County Employee Health and Wellness, July, running July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026.
Commissioner Spitalary?
Aye.
Commissioner Braking?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Kristi, could you read the next item, please?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board move into executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of a public employee pursuant to ORC 121.22G1. Commissioner Spitalary?
Aye.
Commissioner Braking? Commissioner DeBoer?
Yes. Okay.
That's fine, okay. We're in good shape, we're all right.
We're good. All right. So you ready?
Yeah.
All right. I have you returning at 12:06.
Yes.
Okay. Action from the executive session?
No action from the executive session, but we just want to finish up with the healthcare topic. Megan, you have the floor.
Okay. Megan Erickson, Commissioner's Office. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and accept the 2026 Georgia County Employee Healthcare Waiver rates to be effective January 1st, 2026.
So much.
Mr. Breckie?
Hi.
Mr. DeBoer.
Yes. Okay, I don't think we have any other business. Go ahead.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the subcode Georgia County healthcare rate renewal acceptance for 2026.
And this has been updated to be just the one.
The 1F claim, yes. And dental at the 1,000 cap.
Okay.
And then that include, that's the 90-10 split county, 90 employee, 10, correct?
Correct.
And then, does this motion include the increase to the employee waiver for waiving insurance coverage?
That was the...
That was the first one.
Oh, that was included. That was included in the first.
That was for the...
I think you're referring to the contribution rates that we're not doing today.
Okay. Okay.
But this was the increased waiver.
Okay, got it. I thought that was the wellness program.
You did that. That was the first one, yeah.
We've done three.
Confusing day.
There's a lot of balls in the air, okay.
So if you're in agreement with the 1F?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not like thrilled with these plans, but I think it's the best, not great options, so I'll move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spitalar? Mr. Breckie?
Hi.
Mr. DeBoer.
Yes.
Do you have to sign names?
Sorry.
Okay.
And then, anything else?
I think we're good. I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is this just for you, Mr. DeBoer?
Yes.
Yes. Good, good.